I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, December 13th, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in our school board meeting room located at Northfield Public Schools District Offices. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. We'd like to welcome those in the audience who are here to observe us do our important work on behalf of our students. We appreciate that you took the time to be here this evening. As a reminder, Northfield Public School requires all people over the age of two to wear a face covering while inside a Northfield School District facility, including during school board meetings. So with that, Dr. Hillman, there were a number of items, some items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file this evening, we have an updated truth in taxation presentation that will go along with Director Val Murdaestorff's presentation tonight. We also have a COVID-19 funding summary that's going to accompany my superintendent operations and COVID-19 update. We also have a number of personnel items, appointments increased, decreased, change in assignment. We have one resignation, retirement slash termination, and then some additional information, excuse me, a modified recommended motion for the start time for school board meetings.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to public comment. Tonight, we actually have two opportunities for public comment. Tonight, in conjunction with our meeting, our regular school board meeting is the district's truth in taxation public hearing. So we'll begin with those who are here to wish to make general comments. And then during the truth in taxation presentation, community members, Northfield District taxpayers at that time will also have an opportunity to make comments and ask questions. So let me explain the public comment guidelines. This is an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, guardians, students, and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy 206 regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You are prohibited from making comments about specific students, staff, and administrators. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or to a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the board chair, identify yourself and if you represent a group. We require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the board will address their remarks, of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. Please keep your mask on when speaking from the podium. The board has allotted a total up to 30 minutes for public comment at our regular school board meetings. I'll begin now to call on those who signed up in order to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Amy Goretz will be monitoring the speaker's time. She'll signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, 30 seconds, and 10 second intervals. Again, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes. So tonight, we have one individual who signed in to speak, and so the board welcomes Matt Roan. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Everyone in this room wants kids, faculty, and staff wearing masks only voluntarily. We have proof here in Northfield that this can be achieved today. And Olaf and Carlton have done it this semester by having over 90% of people properly vaccinated. I'm not calling for mandatory vaccination for the school system, even as the colleges have shown the wisdom of this. I am concerned, though, that political pressure has led the school system to be more cautious than is desirable about providing information about vaccination and what they make possible. Please be more clear and vocal on your website and in other ways about how people can get vaccines and how this is a path to ending masking and having everyone safe. You know better than I how best to treat this matter, and I want to thank all involved in the wise way COVID mitigation has been handled. The school system, all here and throughout the district, has pursued this difficult matter wisely and with good sensitivity to the community. I just want to nudge you to promote vaccination, greater clarity, and celebrate how they can get us to the goal of no more masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak? That does conclude our public comment portion this evening, so we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just have one announcement this evening. I want to share with the board highlighting our strategic commitment of partnerships. Over this past weekend, it was a real joy to be able to hear the Northfield High School choirs at Carlton College in the beautiful Skinner Chapel for the traditions concert. Of course, last year, the traditions concert had to take the year off due to the global health pandemic. But again, with, I think, what were very sensible safety protocols, we had two very well-attended concerts at Skinner Chapel, and just really glorious to hear our kids singing and making music in that beautiful space again. So want to highlight when we are bringing things back that were absent for a year, and then also highlight the wonderful partnership that we have with the colleges where they do allow us to use their space for our performers. So we thank Carlton. I thank Kyle Eastman and his team who were able to help put that wonderful concert on. Pretty full crowds, both on Saturday evening and Sunday in the afternoon.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, any other thing they would like to comment on? We will move on now to our items for discussion and report. Our first item for report tonight is the truth in taxation presentation for the payable 2022 property tax levy. And just as a reminder, it will be followed by any community members who wish to make a public comment about this presentation. So we do welcome Val Murdaestorff, Director of Finance, to do the presentation. Welcome, Val.
I just do want to remind board members, there was an updated presentation file in your table file.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk about the truth in taxation, our final certified levy. As a part of the truth in taxation, we are required to talk about our budget with the public. And so we have taken advantage of that opportunity to actually just revise the budget. The timing works really well based on the data that we have at this point in the year. So we'll talk through both of those things. If I can get my narrative to stay on my phone here. So the levy cycle is pretty systematic each year. In the spring, this is actually a very not well-known fact, but the assessor will value all the properties in the spring. And actually, your chance to argue your value ends like in April. Most people don't really know that, and they get their statements in November and then want to do something about it and aren't able to. But that happens in the spring. And then in September, we worked through our preliminary levy. The levy is a bunch of state formulas and voter-approved items that give the general fund, community education, and our debt service fund revenue. And once we have a preliminary levy, along with every other taxing jurisdiction, we submit that to the county. They calculate our net tax capacity based on all of the property values and the different classes that are in our taxable area. And then they put that on the statements, send it out. And then we have an opportunity to change anything if we need to. We are not changing anything from what was presented in September. The total changed slightly, but that is formula things that happened at the state level, not anything that we actually changed. And then after it's certified tonight, after we hold the truth in taxation hearing, we will certify that to the Minnesota Department of Education. Rice County, which is our home county, we are actually in three separate counties, Rice, Dakota, and Goodview. And Rice works with the other two counties to figure out how much they actually need to levy on our behalf. And then we will do, we actually also formalize a report to the Department of Revenue stating that we actually held this meeting. So there's a few steps, but that's kind of the overall process. So one thing that I think is really critical to note is that school funding is highly regulated by the state. The levy certification document on the Department of Education's website is 39 pages of eight-point font, showing every formula that the district has access to. Not all of them we qualify for, but it shows every single revenue calculation that the state goes through to total up to our approved levy. So it's pretty prescriptive in terms of revenue, what we can levy for or not levy for. It's pretty much all driven by the state legislature. There are several things that can affect our total property tax levy in a given year. A voter-approved referendum, the last one we increased, we approved was in 2018. We do have the inflationary factor on ours, so it does increase actual rate increases. But it is based on enrollment, so that can go up or down depending on enrollment and inflation. Levy adjustments, the levy cycle from the very start to the very finish is about a five-year process. We levy about 18 months in advance of when we actually get to claim the revenue, 12 months or so. And then there is a reconciliation process because it is all state formulas to ensure that we're getting all of the revenue that we were supposed to for enrollment. They make sure all of those are trued up and any other calculations. And so there's a three-year adjustment period, so start to finish ends up being about five years. Legislative changes can impact that sometimes dramatically, depending on what the legislature chooses to do or not to do. This particular levy cycle is pretty quiet on the legislative front. Changes in market values or in class rates depend. We have about 40 different class rates. We have one of the more complex property tax systems in the country. All of those play into the overall calculation, as well as levies by other taxing jurisdictions can impact your total. For the school district, it's important to note that we levy a specific dollar amount. So if our net tax capacity goes up or goes down, the school district is still levying the same exact dollar amount. It's just a matter of how much the individuals actually end up paying, depending on how those different things impact their individual valuation. So the levy is pretty critical for us. It provides 25% of our total general fund budget, which is a pretty significant portion. It does also have a component for debt service. We are required by statute to levy 105% of our debt service obligations. So that is included as well. Voter-approved levies and state authorized levies. There are no levies that is Northfield Public School saying, let's levy $1 million. That is not how it works. It is all formula-driven based on what the Department of Education has allowed in the law or in the statute. It really fills the gaps in the underfunding from the state. The basic formula has not kept up with inflation for 30 years or so. And so it really does, if you do the math, it is actually almost exactly filling the gap of what we would, should be getting from the state had they kept up with inflation. And it really does allow us to continue the programming that we have been well-known for. So overall, the property tax for pay 22 is down about just shy of $304,000 or 1.5%. And the total is $20,017,034.10. That was the preliminary. Our final certified is just shy of that, at $20,9,247.48. And again, that is just a small calculation thing. I believe it was the LTFM, but we'll be able to see that on my detail. So overall, pretty consistent. Like I said, not really any significant legislative impacts or anything from last year to this year. So this just shows the difference between what we were, the max authority in September that was approved, and the actual certification in December. Pretty comparable from year to year. We do not do any mass underlevies or anything like that. We try to be very consistent for our taxpayers so they have a consistent impact on their tax statements. But you can see overall about $300,000 less than the prior year. Overall, the general fund, the referendum, you can see is 37.6%, that is the vast majority of our levy. The general fund other is about 30%, and that is all of the state authorized levies primarily. And includes a component for operating capital, long-term facilities, maintenance, local optional revenue, and a bunch of other miscellaneous ones. Debt service is the next largest at almost 27%. And again, that is primarily voter-approved bonds that the debt service is paying for. The capital at 3.7% is actually the voter-approved capital projects levy, $750,000. And then community services, meaning education, I gotta update that, is about 2.1% of the total. We are required by statute to show this particular breakdown. So by fund, by truth in taxation category, and by tax base. So this is just basically three different ways to show how the $20 million is made up. So you can see 14.2 million of that is for the general fund, that is the vast majority of the levy, and 5.3 million being debt services, the other larger component. Both of those are actually less than the prior year, and community education saw a slight increase in theirs. The voter-approved, again, is 12.6%, which is the majority. I think it was 63, my narrative here that keeps setting off on my phone. But again, a huge testament to this community and their support of the school district. And then the referendum market value and net tax capacity are just various ways that the different formulas are calculated and actually put onto the tax statements. The referendum market value is, as the name would suggest, primarily for the operating referendum. So it shows that breakout, but overall fairly consistent from year to year. This shows kind of the breakdown, gives you some more detail about the general fund and the different formulas that make that $14 million up. Again, referendum is the largest component of that. As you can see, it's pretty consistent. Almost every single formula, I want to say 60% of them, are enrollment-based formulas. And so you can see in the difference column, they are almost all declining slightly, and that is because we are experiencing declining enrollment. And so that impacts all of the different formulas that are enrollment-based. Yeah, that's just kind of the breakdown. The adjustments, you will see went up from the prior year. And that was actually a county error on last year's pay 21 levy. There was a calculation that resulted in us getting basically an extra $116,000. So we have put that away in account because they're adjusting for that this year and taking that back out. And so that'll clean itself up this year. And this just gives you a little bit of history of how our levy has been over the last five years. A note on there, pay 18 was the increase for the voter-approved referendum. So the 23.62 is obviously much higher than the other years. But overall, it's been very consistent since then. I think it's an average of 5.5 over the last five years. Actually declining this year. Realized it did not include the chart from others. I think I included it in September, but not in this one. But overall, it's about, I want to say for like a $200,000 house, it's about a 7% reduction, assuming that your market value stayed the same, which is extremely unlikely. But in theory, the school district taxes should go down or stay relatively similar, depending on how much your market value would have changed. And now I'm going to talk about the general fund budget and how we're going to revise that and why. So like I stated at the beginning of my presentation, this is, the timing works out super well. October 1, as you know, is a big date for our enrollment. We now have that. We know how many students are here and can make a more accurate projection for the end of the year. We are also done with our audit, which will be presented in a little bit. We have our employment agreements finalized by this time typically. Like I should knock on wood, we've had really good luck with that. We also have a better sense about our federal funds, a little better sense. But still, there's still a lot happening there, which we'll talk about. But no, some of the COVID protocol, we're not changing learning models this year, so there's some things there. We know about the health insurance, so there's a few things that have just come together that make this a really good time. This is, this slide was updated from your original one that you received. I had a couple subtotal issues on this one. This is why you should use Excel and not the graphs in PowerPoint, but I've changed almost all of them except this. So you can see last year, I like to just include last year's adopted revised and actual just to see kind of, for me, it's helpful to see how close the estimate actually was or the projection was. So as a reminder, the adopted number happens in the spring. So April and May are typically when we're setting those numbers. The revised happens in December, and then the actual, we find out probably about three months, four months after the school year is finished in August, September, when we're working on the audit. So we had last year originally projected about 4,406 weighted. We decreased it because of the pandemic and the impact that we saw with the decline in students. And we actually still ended less than I had projected, even after reducing it. So that for me was pretty telling that we had some, the enrollment was declining at a slightly faster pace because of the impacts of the pandemic. So this year, I had originally put about 4,196 as our projection for weighted. And that's actually looking slightly better. I had actually picked the wrong column in the spring when I did the budget. So the 3787 was the 2223. So we're actually increasing that because it's not declining quite that quickly, which is actually very good for our revised budget. It means a little additional revenue. But you can see that the difference is very interesting. The elementary grades are a little higher than projected, which is great, but the secondary is quite a bit less. So overall, it ends up with about 47 more kids than originally projected in the spring. But still, overall, declining if you compare to the 2021 actual of 4330, we're at 4231. And hopefully, that's pretty close this time. So that really drives the state sources. So you can see there's an increase in the state sources, and that is almost a direct result of that increase in enrollment. Basic formula increases, as well as most of the other enrollment-based formulas. Federal sources increased. In Dr. Hillman's update, there is a very comprehensive spreadsheet that shows you all of the federal funds that we have received to date since the beginning of the pandemic and where we are at in spending them. So I am anticipating that we will do a second revision to the budget this year. That is not typical for me, but the federal funds, due to the way that we're reserving them and using them as needed, they are reimbursement-based. So if there's a significant change in what we're anticipating spending, we would bring that back. But right now, it's just shy of $3 million that we're anticipating spending in federal dollars, which you can see 1.4, 1.6 is our kind of pre-pandemic normal federal range. So all of the extra is directly tied to the pandemic funds that we've received. The local sources has been declining, and there's lots of reasons for that. But the 1.4 is actually an increase from the adopted budget. I was pretty conservative in the spring because we were not sure what this year would look like in terms of activities, access to events, and those types of things, field trips. All of those things go into local revenues. And we have been able to do more things than we had originally anticipated in the spring, which has been great. So that is the total revenue revision, so 58.488 is the revised revenue budget. And on the expenditure side, a couple different things playing in here. I'm going to pull up my narrative so I don't miss anything. So it's just over $1 million, I believe, in increase. A large chunk of that is the federal fund increase. So we're making sure that we're matching up what I said we're increasing in federal revenue because it is reimbursement-based, so we have to have those expenditures incurred. There's a few payroll things that are just getting kind of shored up based on how we ended last year. The additional staff that were hired with the SRR2. Try to remember all the program names. The SRR2 funds, I believe, is the 1.165 million. Making sure that we had all of those allocated in the right buckets. The health insurance is the other large component of that salary and benefit increase. You are well aware of that. We presented about that at a previous meeting, but that is the other large increase there. The increase that we talked about at that meeting was actually for the calendar year, so only half of it is impacting this budget through June 30th because the rates will go into effect January 1st. That's not true, 2/3 because of the way the teacher contract works. Their insurance is covered through August 31st, so little in the weeds there for you. Supplies and other, again, just kind of matching up budgets and making sure that they are accurate to where things are. Again, supplies, particularly masks and those sorts of things are where we're seeing the heaviest increase. And then capital stayed the same. So overall, I would say the health insurance and just the federal are the really the largest pieces that are impacting that total. Everything else has been relatively consistent and appears to be on pace with what we've seen in past budgets. So overall, when you pull it together, this is always an interesting slide for me to put together because when I do the adopted budget, the beginning fund balance number is different because I don't actually have final audited numbers. So I update that to see where we would land. But overall, with the new 58.4 and increased expenditures, again, primarily due to the health insurance and supplies, we're looking at ending at 16.01%. I feel like I wanted to tweak that math just slightly to make it 16 on the dot, but that's not how I work, so I didn't. Mathematically, that is just how it came out. Mathematically, that is just how it came out. So so that was a coincidence. So we did end last year better than anticipated, which you will hear about during the audit. And so really our starting fund balance and our restricted fund balance are in a better place that allows for that number to look slightly better. So instead of eight point six, well, I'm anticipating that we'll end at a little over nine point seven million. I will also just caution you on the, the unassigned percentage is a percentage of the total expenditures. So if there are large swings or decreases in that, those numbers that impact that percentage, the calculation is what it is, and that's what we've agreed to do as a district, but the fourteen point four or the eighteen, it just looks slightly different than maybe what we had originally anticipated because of those numbers being different than what was originally projected. But overall, we're anticipating about sixteen percent, which is a very good place to be. I'll take that over fourteen, but that is what it looks like right now, based on my educated guesses. I've, I've told Dr. Hillman, my job is to tell you what I think is going to happen and then tell you why I was wrong. So I will take any questions you might, or you want to do questions at the end.
What we will do right now, actually, because this is the truth and taxation public hearing. So we will ask if there's anyone in any Northfield Public School District taxpayers who want to comment or ask questions regarding the this, which is the truth and taxation public hearing for Northfield Public School District. Okay, so seeing no one come forward to make public comment, we can move now to questions or comments from board members. Amy.
I just want to say thank you for once again, giving us a very clearly outlined and detailed report that's easy to understand and I appreciate that. A lot of complicated things could have boiled down into something that we can read and understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Other questions or comments? Well, I think Amy stated it well. So thank you for making that comment because I was thinking when I went through this, you could teach a class honestly on this. And the presentation is always so clear. I had one question about supplies and where you think we may be impacted by the current inflation rates? And if you made any adjustments there, I think it reflects three percent here, but you know, we're hearing six percent and then, you know, some. So just wondering if you wanted to comment on how you might, you think that might impact some of the expenses?
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about it. I will say our supply budget is interesting because there's a pretty, pretty significant chunk of that supply budget that happens right away in August and September, when they're kind of front loading for the school year. Certainly not everything, but we're, I would say a little bit insulated just because there is a little bit more of that happening earlier in the year than later. We actually have purchasing deadlines for most of the budgets that end like April fifteenth, so that we can make sure everything's in before the end of the school year. So in that regard, we're sitting slightly better than maybe some other organizations. I would say the biggest things, I mean, really every inflation impacts pretty much everything. And so it's interesting to see some vendors are actually more responsive to that than others. And so it'll be interesting to watch. When we are ordering supplies, we have the option to compare vendors like all in one site. If, if they're taking advantage of that, it's through, through our finance system. And so that'll be really interesting to see if they're the range of prices exacerbates. Right now, most of the vendors are pretty much in the same range. So that'll be interesting to see. I anticipate a little more of the shopping around mentality to make sure they're getting the best price and those sorts of things. I think the shipping is probably my bigger concern than the actual supply costs. We've already seen that a little bit this year. If it's not more expensive, it takes quite a bit longer. So those are some of the things I know that we're kind of watching, but it's got to kind of roll with it and hope for the best and see if there's things that we can maybe reduce or live without a little bit. Or kind of creative way to use something we already have, but see how it goes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So any other last questions? Oh, Tom.
Along those same lines, what about heating costs for the winter?
That will be very interesting. So we have actually had a pretty good track record over the last couple of years. Partially pandemic related, when the, all the buildings shut down, we saw great, great year in utilities, but because we are part of the Excel Renewable Connect, it's all dollar and so hopefully it'll be more reasonable. We did actually see Excel change something on their bill recently that I know building's from was concerned about some annual or monthly charge that they were adding. Remember what it was for right off the top of my head, but I remember there's little things like that that we're seeing vendors do now in ways that they hadn't done before to recoup some of their, their operating costs. It'll be, we got curtailed. So part of the Excel bill is we get a discounted rate. And if they tell us to curtail the energy, we have to shut all the things down and meet certain requirements. And that happened quite a bit last year. And so I think that results in savings for the district when we're managing that. It'll be interesting to see if this is a super cold winter or that honestly, the weather plays a pretty significant role in, in what we pay. One thing that I do think will benefit us this year is that we don't have the rack house. That was completely on propane. And so that could be pretty spendy in the winter. We did transfer the propane to the new ski shed that is heated for their materials, but it's a smaller space rather than heating an entire house and the garage. So hopefully that will reduce costs a little bit. The brand new elementary that is really energy efficient. So I'm hoping that that will help as well. And we have put a pretty big effort into LED and that has actually, we've seen some dramatic decreases in, in utilities in that way. So I'm hoping it'll all kind of balance out, but again, that's something we kind of just watch and adjust as needed. We don't have a significant amount of control over that.
And Tom, just to let you know, we've been working with our representative from Excel Energy to come give the board a presentation about the Renewable Connect program in the next couple of months. There's apparently a waiting list for that program now. You know, we are one of the original school districts in twenty-eight, seventeen or eighteen that entered the program and there's now a waiting list to get into it.
Any other questions? Excellent. Other questions, comments? Okay. Well, thank you, Val. I mean, it just, your report always reflects your experience, your knowledge and really your cautious optimism, which has served us extremely well. So thank you. So we will be approving those late, the truth that the truth, I'm sorry, payable twenty twenty-two property tax levy and revised general fund budget as we move through the agenda this evening. We have our next item for discussion and report is our fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit results and presentation. And we have here to do that presentation Craig Pappenhagen from Clifton Larson Allen. On our table file tonight, there was the the executive summary of the audit and then there was the presentation was in your table file. No, I'm sorry, was in the regular packet. That was not updated in the table file. So the one that came with your packet is the presentation that Craig will use. So welcome, Craig.
Yeah, thank you. Nice to see everybody.
You found our new space.
I did. And I was going to the old space first. It was like, you know, that was, that was just programmed to feature of habit. Here I am. And I have a presentation. Oh yeah, I'll just jump right into it here. We noted opinion. So basically that means, you know, the numbers are well supported. They're correct and accurate in all material respects to the best of our ability. Very clean reporting on controls and compliance as well. So no findings and you know, it's it's nice to come through the year like, you know, the one we had, twenty twenty-one was kind of the, the topsy-turvy year with the COVID environment and everything throughout us. People adapting to, you know, are we in person? Are we distant? Are we hybrid? You know, what have you? And it's nice to see that, you know, for one, didn't skip a beat on processes or, or anything like that. Compliance was maintained. So that was very good. Plus there was more, you know, just basically compliance generally, you had all the COVID aid coming through in addition to what you normally have for federal aid programs as well. So a very good result. So speaking of compliance, so with the single audit this year, you know, as with any year, anytime you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal, federal financial assistance through federal financial aid, that brings with it, you know, the compliance audit. This year, you know, special education was kind of up. We tested that one anyway. Plus with the additional COVID aid, we did test the coronavirus relief on expenditures, which was new. Of course, again, just no, no findings or issues there to report. Very clean bill of health. Just a quick mention and some future changes. So there's a new accounting standard for leases that takes effect for the year that we're in. So, you know, the next audit report, we'll talk about that a little bit more. These new numbers to report different places in your financials. Really will not change, you know, how you measure expenditures or anything like that. Of course, there's new codes, some new codes that the Department of Education requires us to track these in. So that's about the only change. Otherwise, really no change in your expenditures, how you manage day-to-day operations at all. The year after that, subscription-based information technology is another new standard that's coming out. It's going to feel quite a bit like leases. So basically, long and short of it is if you have a multi-year contract, that brings with it required payments, you know, that obligation to make those payments goes up as a liability somewhere in your statements. And then, you know, basically a right to use asset for the term of the contract. So this new or different, not really changing how we measure expenditures or anything like that. So with expenditures, kind of looking at the general fund for the twenty twenty-one school year, revenues in total came in right at fifty-eight point six million, expenditures about fifty-nine million. Drew down fund balance in total for the general fund by about four hundred thousand dollars. So some of that decrease, honestly, you can kind of tie back to investment returns. Investment returns, you know, had been trending upward in the market. That kind of changed during COVID. So investment turns, returns were down. That was kind of beyond it. If I had to point to one thing about what that four hundred thousand dollar decrease represents, a good chunk of it. Let's see, left to right, kind of your, on the left, your discretionary, your funds you have control over about fifteen point nine million dollars, another four hundred thousand restricted for kind of classroom use. Half million dollars for operating capital, which is one of your two capital related revenue restrictions. And the other one is long-term facilities maintenance. So about one point two million on L T F M. We'll break those down, maybe a little bit more here, but the, you know, the L T F M, that one's going to kind of expand or contract depending on kind of where you are in your, in your capital plan, right? So each kind of each mid-year revisit your plan, you update it, what your plan is, what your projects are, update that within the easily understand what's going on as well. Okay. Revenue sources, kind of looking at that, general fund again, about fifty-eight million dollars. And heavily state controlled as in through any other year, that has not changed. The Department of Education controls about sixty-nine percent of your total revenues coming in. They're kind of holding the first strings on that. Property taxes represent about twenty-five percent or more, most or a fourth of your general fund revenues. Thank you to those property taxpayers for being strong supporters and, and kind of being behind Northfield schools, what you're doing here. They're willing to invest in and in that curriculum and in that instruction. So that's great to see. The federal piece, talked about a little bit about COVID assistance or COVID aid, but that federal slice of the pie is a little bit bigger for twenty twenty-one compared to twenty twenty. So we'll, I'll give you just a snapshot of that here. And like we have up now, it's just kind of a comparison of twenty twenty. So you know, by and large, the pie looks about the same, other than the federal slice is a little bit bigger. Expenditure wise for twenty twenty-one, so we looked at, you know, we were looking at revenues, where's the money coming from? Looking at expenditures now, where is it going? So this is kind of telling you where we're spending those dollars. So fifty-nine million outbound. This includes now your COVID assistance or COVID aid that's in the mix here this year. So some of that came through as capital related. So, you know, for distance learning and things like that, investing technology there. Kind of working on the bottom of the pie chart on the left, so the pie chart on the left is total of the fifty-nine million. Administration and district support, you know, kind of think of this as your business office. What, five point six? About six percent, right? Out of the total expenses for the, for the district. So you're running a lean lean operation from, you know, administration, obviously not losing control of anything because, you know, the clean audit results kind of reflect you're still maintaining control. You've got to, you know, I think a good balance between administration compared to the rest of the operations. The gray slice of the pie, that's your biggest chunk, right? That's the instruction related expenditures. So still holding strong at about seventy-eight percent or seventy-eight cents on the dollar going into the classroom and student support. So educating the student. The mix, you know, out of the, the total pie is a little bit different again, largely because of the COVID aid coming through. But so the capital piece is a little bit larger. Compare that to twenty twenty, the capital piece a little bit smaller. So it plays with the percentages a little bit, but you know, the math still works out that you have a very high percentage of your cost going into the classroom. Okay. Kind of an, trending out enrollment a little bit. Now enrollment was down a little bit for twenty twenty-one, largely, you know, you can blame pandemic on that. Not a catastrophic drop by any means, but something to keep an eye on, you know, each student brings with them about sixty-five hundred dollars in state aid. But kind of hence the high proportion of state-controlled revenues funding your operations. Food service, food service was pretty much one of those areas that was, you know, and it turned upside down during the pandemic. during the pandemic. So they have, you know, kind of an increase even in fund balance here is, you know, very good result. Thing that was quite different for 2021 was that, you know, the summer food program ran for the entire year. So it was a great benefit for students and families because those students got free meals for the entire school year. Picked up by the federal government. So ending food fund balance for food service, $565,000. And community education, that was another area that was really kind of turned upside down with COVID. For one, you couldn't have, you know, couldn't have the activities, you can have the events. And then with the governor's mandate, essential workers are provided free childcare during the pandemic. So kind of childcare related areas, he had the cost, didn't have all the revenues. So kind of long and short of it, I think he came through a very challenging year. Pretty well. So process wise is good. The fund balance or financial position here in forward. Very good results. So that's what I have for prepared remarks.
Excellent. Thank you. So I think we would want you to comment first on the clean audit report and just your experience with other districts and and how, how, what I understand, very rare do you see that kind of, these kind of audit reports? So certainly just give a public testament to Val and her team and the work that they do.
Yeah, I think we work with or maybe one other district, a very small number that have absolutely no finding. So what's typical, at least as a minimum, you have a, is to get a finding on financial reporting. So, you know, with the maintain all the numbers, right? And we audit the numbers. And typically audit firms add the all, you know, the 120 pages of additional, the rest of the book that goes with those. And typically that brings with it a finding, but in the Northfield case, I mean, Val gives us a good detailed review and with her background, she can kind of spend or mitigate a finding of that nature. So very good result.
So this is where we publicly acknowledge the incredible effort, which we always try to do with velvet, but the audit report and the the no findings and just how you stack up against other districts, you're just top notch. And and this audit result always proves that. So I would ask for a round of applause for Val. Of course, thanks to Craig and Luke and your team for for doing this work for us. So board members, specific questions for Craig? No.
Some years ago, when the federal government decided to fund special education, I think they were proposing they would fund 40%. Or you, you correct me, please.
Yeah, typically it's, I mean, quick math is about two thirds.
I'm sorry?
Two thirds.
Yep. And what is the actual number now?
It'd be be around there. I mean, it hasn't changed just
I think we, I bet it's a little less than 20% right now is what we is around 18 is the last percentage I saw.
I think it's like 12. It's pretty low in comparison and 40 was what was originally promised, but
I think the point of Noel's question is that in the 1970s, the federal government promised to fund 40% of the special education costs and have not come even close to that. And the highest that we we got is about halfway there at about the feds funding about 20% of that, which does create a pretty significant what we call cross subsidy in the state, which of course are special education services are what I consider to be a moral imperative, serving students who have disabilities. But the state has just never come close to funding what it's expected, or excuse me, the federal government has never come close to funding what the expectation was.
Thank you. The lift numbers off your financial statement. Special education instruction expense, right? For the year, 11.2 million dollars. Federal aid portion of that was 840,000.
How much?
840,000.
Okay. From 11 million, 840,000.
And yep, and about two thirds of the 11 million kind of covered by the state.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments for Craig? Amy?
Well, Craig, thank you for your presentation and for all the work that you've done on this audit for us. I'm also curious how we compare special education percentage wise with other districts. I mean, are is are all the districts spending about, you know, it was 19% of the the regular or the instructional budget. Is that, is that pretty much across the board?
You're you're able to do it a little bit more efficiently. So kind of the, you know, the way to kind of look at it is cost per student. So if we look at it that way and kind of benchmark against what the state says, you're, you're generally coming in with less cost compared to, you know, all the districts in the state and also less compared to districts of, you know, roughly a similar enrollment size. So certainly being part of the in a valley and it helps manage those costs pretty effectively. So, so for example, I mean, the difference is, you know, there's four different levels of special education, you know, depending on the new students. If you're taking that on all by yourself, you'd have to employ that faculty all time here, right? Or at least employ that faculty in some fashion through the district, being in part of the pro-op alley, you're kind of some of that cost. So it does help manage that cost.
And I know I'm just having you pull numbers off the top of your head, but you have a sense of, you know, what that savings might be?
I think I do. Bear with me a minute. Trying to do that number. I'll get there. You're not.
Take your time. It's no
Okay. So, yeah, so we're about about $500 difference compared to other districts.
$500 per student left?
Pretty, pretty effective. I mean, they enable the management.
Well, thank you. That's good to hear.
Excellent. Other questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So I, what I really want board members in the community, community to know is that this annual external audit should provide greater confidence in the community of the processes and procedures that we have in place within the system to make sure that all the fiduciary responsibilities are well taken care of. So I think we all know we have an excellent finance department, but I, I just want to emphasize what Craig said here, right? Which is that the processes and procedures that the district has in place are excellent. And to get no findings, as we said, is an unusual piece, but I think the message that we just want for the community is the confidence that they should have that we are appropriately using their funding. And we're doing so in a way where the controls are in place to make sure that it's used appropriately. To get no findings, as we've said, is a, is a very unusual piece across a lot of districts, but it should give the community tremendous confidence in the processes and procedures that the districts have, the district has with their funds. And so I really want board members, that's the message I want to carry out of this meeting is the responsibility, the stewardship and the processes and procedures that we have in place to best use those dollars. And transparency, good point, Noel.
And I think the, you know, kind of the stress test was especially with the COVID environment, having to pivot almost on a dime multiple times during the year. Based on changes in the environment.
Excellent. Thank you for everyone's comments. And Craig, thank you for the relationship that we've, that you've had with Northfield Public School District and with Val and her team and for Luke's work. And we just value our partnership with you and we appreciate your work, the work that you do for us.
Absolutely.
So thank you. Yeah, it was good to be in person.
It is.
Right? So thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks.
So we will, we will move on now to our next item for discussion, which is the superintendent operations in COVID-19 update. And just a reminder that there was an updated report in the table file that was additionally added by Val Murdestorff that reflected the COVID recap of COVID dollars. So Dr. Human.
Yes. So I'm going to go through the, I'm going to go a little bit backwards in my report, start with the one non-COVID component. Then I'll share a little bit about the data we have, as we always do, a little bit about the latest data. I'll share with you the draft of the COVID-19 exit protocols that we have for your consideration. Again, no vote on that tonight. We're not asking you to approve it. We're simply sharing with you a draft exit strategy. And then I will have Val talk about the federal funds update that she had in the table file. So the, the non-COVID item that is on my report this time is I just want to share the board and the community specifically about some initial discussions that we're having with World Architects and Knutson Construction about the future of Northfield High School. So again, very preliminary, we have had, as you know, world architects and Knutson Construction are the folks that we worked with on our elementary referendum projects. And the high school is a project that we need to take a look at. We are just having some very preliminary discussions with our administrative team with Sal Bagley from World Architects and some other folks from World, some reps from Knutson Construction. Our focus so far on those discussions has really been around the concept of renovation of the existing facility and some potential additional facilities for things like arts and athletics activities. And so I don't have any additional details at this time. I just want to share with you that we are starting some of those conversations about what would the future of the high school facility be? So just wanted to share that so that if you hear that we've started to talk a little bit with the architect, that everybody knows where we're at, it's preliminary discussions and we will keep you updated as that process goes along. So I think I'll pause and just ask if there are any questions on that particular item.
Any questions regarding some current interest and and work towards the possible improvements to Northfield High School? I, I think it's a great time to review and look at that.
Great. So now we'll get into the COVID component of the update. And so what I'm sharing with you as I usually do is the week over week incident by age and collection a report. As you can see, we, the week of November 28th through December 4th, there were 378 new cases within the county. That was up slightly over the week before. The week before had been, well, it was up significantly over the week before, but the week before was the Thanksgiving holiday. And so there was a limited testing during that time. So we're 378 cases in that one week. A number I'm going to be sharing with you now is the rice county rate per 100,000 residents. So you remember in the past, we had looked at the state's number where they would calculate a county COVID-19 rate per 10,000 residents, and that was over a 14-day period. This summer, MDH really consolidated that county rate to being a county rate, a seven-day county rate per 100,000 residents. This is a way that we can compare across the country. It's the standard CDC comparison tool. So you'll see that this week's, the current, the, the one last Thursday was 565.91. They do update that number more often. It's not an everyday piece, but they did update it today. They updated it on Mondays and the updated rate, we are seeing some positive movement down to 528.58. So that just came through today and we didn't have time to get that into the table file. So that is the, that is just the latest update with regard to the number of COVID cases and then that rate per 100,000 residents. I do want to point out that we just shared with you that as of December 9th, when we put this report in the packet, we had a total of 251 positive COVID-19 cases. And at that time, there were 45 active cases. This is what I want to share with you, just how every day we update the dashboard and we work through. So we are now up to a total of 256 positive COVID-19 cases. That's a positive laboratory confirmed positive test result. That goes back to August 31st. And then as every day, we potentially can add cases to the dashboard and some cases come off. As of this morning, we were down to 38 total cases that were active cases reported in the last 14 days in the district. So that is the data update in terms of where we are at. Also, if we take a look at the average student quarantine rate, the one that I have in the packet here, the average district rate was 3.51%. And the average of students with influenza-like illness symptoms is 1.86% during that same timeframe. And again, we update the dashboard every week. So you'll see, if you've taken a look at the dashboard lately, the weekly average ILI rate ranged anywhere from 1% at the area learning center to Spring Creek, which had the highest last week at 2.79%. The weekly quarantine rate range from 1.19% up to what I'm going to say is 5.71%. We have an outlier, the area learning center did have a quarantine rate last week of 10%, but we have to remember that the ALC has 76 people between students and staff there. And so that's a total of seven students. So, you know, one kind of incident, you know, can really throw those large percentages off. So I just want to point that out that you see a 10% number on there and your heart goes. But remember, we're just working with a much smaller total number of students and staff in that facility. So that is the general COVID update. And then what I want to share with you next are some, a draft for you of a potential exit strategy. So back in August, on August 9th, when the board originally adopted the COVID-19 protocols for the 2021, 22 school year, we talked about that we would continuously take a look at where we were at from a public health perspective and that we would consider looking at what the exit strategy would be for these protocols. We talked through the fall about that we said that there are three metrics that we would look at. We would take a look at the influenza-like illness rate, which we've been giving you updates on since last September. We would talk with you a little bit about the K, we would potentially use the vaccination rate and then also the county case rate. So what we want to share with you is again, no action tonight. This is a draft. We worked with this with our incident command team and specifically Dr. Ben Miller, who is on our incident command team. He's an professional epidemiologist and looked at three different data points that would potentially have us relax or shift from our universal masking and our current quarantine protocols to a strategy that would include recommended masking and optional quarantine, who are, for those who are identified as close contacts at a school with someone who has tested positive COVID-19. It's important to say that because there are other rules if you are exposed in the home, there's a, there's a difference set with the decision tree of how that works. So we're specifically talking about those circumstances. We've shared with you all along that we want an ILI rate or the influenza-like illness rate of less than 5%. That's a longstanding Minnesota Department of Health piece of data. As you know, there are some schools that have closed an elementary school in the past, pre-COVID, when they had a really high, high ILI rate influenza-like illness, when they had an outbreak of the flu, of course, not frequent, but it's a number that we have always looked at in the 25 years that I've been in public education. And so that's number one, we've got to be able to hit that average per week of 5%. Then what we're looking at is an and circumstance, we're looking at a, as you see in the chart that's in your packet, a rate of, I want to really share that this is what I'm calling it, the immunity rate. So the calculation would include both K-12 student vaccinations, that would include both doses. And then adding in the number of COVID-19 infections that we've had in our student population in the last 90 days. So we want to make sure that we include that infection-based immunity that the CDC and MDH indicate is an appropriate thing to include in any kind of calculation like this. So we're taking a look at that in ascending order from less than 60% all the way up to the potential of at least 80%. And it's an and, so then you go to the, the chart on the right-hand side where you look at that seven-day case rate per 100,000 county residents, and we're looking at that number for three consecutive weeks. So in the chart you have, if we had less than 60% in that immunity rate, that seven-day case rate per 100,000 county residents for three consecutive weeks would be, need to below, be below 50. Now, we've only gotten there a few times since the pandemic started, but that is the area of where the CDC and MDH Now, we've only gotten there a few times since the pandemic started, but that is the area of where the CDC and MDH call that substantial concern. So that's one piece. You'd go to the next part, which would be, we'd be looking at if we had at least 60% of an immunity rate and less than 100 per 100,000 residents. The next level would be at least 70% of that immunity rate. Again, both the vaccinations plus the COVID-19 infections in the last 90 days. Then we would get to 125 per 100,000 residents. And then at 80, at least 80%, if we had at least 80% in that immunity rate area, then we could go less than 150 per 100,000 residents. And the concept that we have worked through is that the higher the vaccination rate, the higher the county rate could be because our local school community would have a higher level of protection. So it's this ascending order as the vaccination plus COVID-19 infections rate gets higher, we would then be able to go to relax those safety protocols with a higher number at the county rate. It just, again, because our school community would have greater protection. Now, I do want to share a handful of items here. First thing we're going to go to is at the bottom of that document, it talks about the immunity rate calculation description. We would want to be very specific about how we're going to calculate that. So we'd be taking a look at the total number of K-12 students vaccinated, plus the total number of K-12 students with COVID-19 infections in the last 90 days. And we would divide that by the total number of K-12 students in the latest enrollment report. And so when we take a look at that, you, you're going to have an enrollment report tonight. The number that you want to look at is at the bottom of the page. It's the number that says full-time only excluding early childhood and part-time or independent students. So you'll see that that is the rate. We want to be very specific about what the numbers would be used in the calculation so that it's very transparent as to how we'd be calculating, calculating that. Now, there's a handful of notes that I want to share with you. First of all, the earliest the district would consider, under this draft, the earliest the date that the district would consider any exit strategy would be January 31st of 2022. Wanted to make sure that we come back from that holiday break and have had any kind of infection cycle, be able to go through. We highlight that we are planning to get the seven-day Rice County case rate published every Thursday by Rice County Public Health on their website. In this draft, we give a link to exactly where we'd get it from. We want to emphasize that the Department of Health decision tree would be used for those identified as close contacts within their household and for students or staff who test positive for COVID-19. We don't want anyone to misunderstand that if we say that quarantine becomes optional, of course, if someone has tested positive as a laboratory confirmed, or excuse me, a positive COVID-19 test, they have to follow the decision tree. So we just want to be very, doing the best that we can to be very clear. We also want to highlight that programs for pre-K students would continue universal masking until such a time that those students are eligible for vaccination, remembering that students under the age of two are currently not required to wear a face mask. I mean, this document doesn't apply to those programs held at the Northfield Community Health Center, of course, where the bulk of our early childhood programming is held. We want to be very straightforward that the student vaccination rates are calculated based on data from something that's called the Minnesota Immunization Information Connection. That is a system that we have been getting data from for years. It's a statewide system. And we have access to it to be able to import that data for when families have all sorts of different immunizations or vaccinations. The report that we do use to make that calculation of the vaccination rate, there are no individual student names at all included in that report. So then when all three of those conditions are met, so when we have a less than a 5% ILI rate, we hit that immunity rate and the county case rate per 100,000 residents over a period of three weeks, we would then start those relaxed or the, what we'd remove those protocol shift from universal masking and the, our current quarantining procedure to that recommended masking and more of an optional quarantine on the following Monday. So let's say it's a Thursday that we hit all of those targets, done it for three weeks in a row, the new protocols would start the following Monday. Now, what we're very hopeful for is that we really start to see this data go in the right direction. That's what all of these tools are designed to do. But we also have to consider the possibility, if we were in a position where we could modify the protocols to recommended masking and optional quarantining, there could be the possibility, we might have to go back to the protocols. And what we're saying there is that if we were to exceed the threshold that would correspond with the current immunity rate for two consecutive weeks, we had put the universal masking and the quarantining protocols back into effect the following Monday. And then, of course, we just, we, we think it goes without saying, but we just want to be super clear that, you know, students should, regardless, should stay home when, when symptomatic, even if the safety protocols are reduced. We just want to be clear, if you're not feeling well, stay home. So we've talked at this table all fall about what would the conditions be for us to consider exit criteria? In our discussions, the board has asked me for something that was really more of a database approach in, in terms of the conversations that we've had. We've been working on this for, for quite some time. Really, once the elementary vaccinations became something that was a known, we did start looking at what were the conditions that would be here. We also looked at some things that would be attainable. So I do want to be very transparent that the case rates on the right-hand side, that seven-day case rate for 100,000 does not completely align with MDH or CDC recommendations. In fact, the CDC and MDH recommendations right now, as you all know from the letter that you received from Commissioner Jan Malcolm and the president of the Minnesota chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, those folks are recommending universal masking for K-12 schools regardless of what the current case rates are. They don't believe those should be taken into account. What I want to say is that these, this exit strategy is rooted in public health guidance, but it does not completely follow the public health guidance. And there's a variety of reasons for that. The current levels of data that are associated with the various levels of concern that the, or levels of transmission that the CDC has did not take into account widespread vaccination. So we're looking at what can be reasonable, what would be attainable? And yet what would show that we really are moving in the right direction of having a community board where we're not seeing transmission? We have been under that, that 100 per 100,000 rate a few times. You have to go back to last summer, right, in terms of that? But we know that it's doable. We are hopeful that it's doable. We are continuing to balance. We are all in on making sure that we have uninterrupted in-person learning. We know that the safety protocols that we have in place have helped us maintain that. We also want to paint a, a future where we no longer have these protocols in place. That day will come. So what I brought forward to you is what our initial effort is to offer you a set of database metrics that would guide our exit from those safety protocols when community transmission is reduced and we're seeing a more protected community. So that is the report that I have for you here. I think what we'll do is we'll just pause here. We'll ask for any questions that people have on the, this part of the COVID report. Then I'll go and have Val talk about the federal funds and we'll just wrap it up. And that way, I do want to, I do want to share that I, I did run the latest calculation this afternoon. And based on my initial calculation, it looks like we are at about a total of 56% of students K-12 who are on the path to full vaccination. So anyone five to 11, some of those students now have two doses, but many don't. So really talking, when I use that 56% number, it's anyone who has had at least one dose, the vast majority of those people have had two doses, right? But some elementary students who just recently, or middle school students who've just recently gotten a vaccination, including those in the calculation at this point. And when we estimate the number of students who have had COVID, the, the, the share of the 256 cases, that 60% that first is very doable. It looks like we're very close, if not already there, on the vaccinations plus the COVID-19 infection. So again, conceptual at this point, but I wanted to share with you just where it looks like we were. And just so folks know, it looks right around 40% of five to 11-year-olds in the district have had at least one dose of the vaccine. So just want to share that with you and then ask if there are any questions or comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hulman. Claudia?
Thank you. Just incredible work here for future off-ramping. And I know that it took a lot of time and it was, it's obviously very thoughtful. So I just appreciate that. I had a question. Was the middle school recently on a list? And then, and then I'll let you answer that. And then also, can you give a quick update on the testing that's happening at the district and how the middle school may be participated in that?
Yes, if you can just give me just one moment, I'm going to look up the... I didn't look at the MDH update last Thursday, so give me just a moment. I was, I was watching the weather. Give me this one moment here. Almost there. Yeah, so we did have, Northfield Middle School did make the list of schools that had, so for a long time, the Department of Health would share if any school in the state, not district, but any school in the state, if they had five cases within a two-week reporting period, all of those schools went on what was called the COVID outbreak list. They've now changed that to where they are offering with the ranges that schools run. So the ranges are, you can, zero, five to nine, 10 to 19, 20 to 29, 30 to 39, and so on and so forth. So since that reporting started several, several months ago, we've had three schools that have been on that particular list. So Northfield High School has been on that list twice for, in that five to nine range, that lowest range of concern. And that would have been for the two reporting periods from the previous month. Bridgewater Elementary was on there as well for a couple of reporting periods, two weeks, two, they were not on the last reporting period. And the middle school has been on for, they were on one reporting period and it was actually two reporting periods ago. So we've got three schools that have been on that particular list, but they've been in the lowest range of concern in that ages five to nine. So when we go to our testing center, I'm happy you asked that question. We have the data from the month and I will share that with you right now. So during the month of November, we have offered rapid molecular testing using the Q test right in the room next door here. So it's, it's pretty amazing if you really think about it. We know that testing in the community is, can be difficult to get. So we have a person that we've hired for around six and a half hours a day. They can do about 30 or so tests a day, some more, some days, less, a few others. In November, they did 615 tests. Of course, we did not test on days where school is not in session, so that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of Thanksgiving. And the snow day, we did not, we did not test. Overall, so the, the positivity rate the week after Thanksgiving was 12.8%. Last week, it was down to seven and a half percent. And the overall positivity rate for the month was 10.1%. So if you think about it, that a little more than a month ago, we weren't a COVID-19 testing provider and we did 615 tests in the month of November. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing how we were able to get that up. So is that helpful?
Amy?
So I have two questions. The first one is, I just want you to sort of confirm that any changes would be district-wide and not school by school. And then the second question I have is Faribault has two and a half times the number of cases cumulative than Northfield and Dundas does, you know, total combined. And I'm just wondering, is there any way to pull out Northfield? Or would we want to pull out Northfield and Dundas when we're considering the school district numbers? And if Faribault is still having two and a half times the case rate, and I don't know if they are, it's just a cumulative number. So what, what are you thinking about that?
Yeah, so I think the, the key, yes, we can do that. So in the draft that you have with you, what we wanted to go with was something that anybody could look up on a website, right? So if you go to the Rice County Public Health website, you will see what the county case rate is per 100,000. It is calculated by public health. You know, that's their, it's, it's a one number on a website that does represent our county. And we do have to remember, we have about 260 or so Nor, Faribault residents who open and roll to Northfield. So that's another part of the, part of the consideration. If it is the board's will, we absolutely can do a Northfield-only calculation. And we would need to do that intern, internally. We could do that. Dr. Miller does do that calculation. He's able to split it out. So that is a calculation that we could do internally, if that's the will of the board. The difference is that we would then post that on our dashboard, that would be the number that we would use. The purpose of what we used in the draft was specifically to go to Rice County Public Health. We would, of course, would be using the numbers that public health reports. So the numbers that we would use, we would certainly be able to publish. If it is the will of the board that you say that we go with, for example, the Northfield 55057 number, we certainly can do that. We could potentially even pull in Dundas as well and do our own rate per 100,000 calculation. The, the flaw with that is, of course, we do have students who live in Good Hugh County. We do have, there's, there's other smaller locations. And the issue is that when you start to pull by zip code, so I shared with you the, the Julian Wolfson data a few board meetings ago. One of the issues there is that when you pull in a zip code, it can't differentiate within a particular zip code. We have some, we have some zip codes within, or we have some households within the Faribault zip code who are actually Northfield School District residents, right? So when you have that, the way that you, you pull all of that zip code as opposed to just the school district resident. So anytime that you, any, any of those county, there's some flaws in whichever way. And we're looking at what is the best estimate that we have of the transmission that's closest to us. So we certainly can bring back a draft that would show you how we would calculate and publish the Northfield or the Northfield plus Dundas numbers, if that's something that you have an interest in.
Me, it would make a difference. So, you know, if the, if the, the new cases are still twice as high in Faribault as they are in our area, then I would be interested. But if, if that's just a historical artifact, I'm not worried about it. So it would just be timeliness. And then, don't forget my first question, which was district or school by school?
Yes. So this particular plan, the draft that we have for you, does go at the district level. And a lot of discussion around that. And I would say the reason that the draft includes the district level is that we are an interconnected community. So one of the things that we are seeing right now is in the, in the actual COVID cases that we are seeing, we are seeing if one family member tests positive, we are seeing many of the family test, members test, if not the entire family. And so when we have students who are at various grade levels, we have a concern about, about modifying the restrictions for some buildings and not for others. That could lead to some confusion. It could also lead to some potential, you know, additional unintentional transmission in terms of a building that doesn't have a masking requirement versus the one that does. So the initial component is looking at doing this at the district level. There are several ways that you could do it. You could, you, you could split the difference between building by building and looking at the district level by saying, we want to calculate the rates by secondary, right? So you could do middle school and high school and you could do elementaries. You could do all elementaries, a middle school rate and a high school rate. Those, those are other things that we could look at. If that's what the board wants me to do, wants you, us to bring back a couple of other different options. Again, my concern is that we're such an interconnected school district and we have many families who have students at multiple age levels. And we just really want to make sure we, you know, as we, as we improve, we want to make sure we don't have any kind of boomerang effect to the best of our ability. It's, it's a virus, the virus is going to virus. But we've tried to take pragmatic mitigation strategies that prevent that from happening. So we certainly could look at differentiating by level. The reason that we didn't in this draft is because we just have seen, again, we, we see unfortunately, once one student in a family tests positive, many times we're seeing the entire family, or at least the students, testing positive.
Noel and then Jeff.
Dr. Hulman, what is the impact of the two colleges where they have mobility under the Rice County numbers?
Yeah, that's a great question, Noel. And what I would say is that, and I'm going to, this is my opinion. So my opinion is that we have been very fortunate. I think Carlton and St. Olaf have been, if state leaders for sure, if not national leaders, and how they have worked on keeping the virus off their campus to the best of their ability. They have a variety of different tools that they have used that we do not use. Both Carlton and St. Olaf have required vaccination for all employees and students. There are some modest exceptions, from health-related exceptions. If you read it in the Star Tribune over the weekend, Carlton and St. Olaf are also both the first two colleges in the state to mandate vaccination booster shots within a certain period of time. They also have a very sophisticated surveillance testing system where people are selected at random to, to do testing. So I would argue that the numbers that you're seeing at St. Olaf are, are very minimal, and they do not have, of course, they, they have some impact, but they have a very limited impact. And I really compliment the colleges because I know we had, we had a number of parents who were very concerned about the potential impact that the colleges would have. And I just, I really want to compliment both Carlton and St. Olaf on the work that they've done. They've really done remarkable work to be able to promote their own in-person learning. So Noel, based on the data that I've seen, I would say that it's a very minimal impact on the community and the county numbers.
Yeah, I would be, I mean, some of your points I like. I would be cautioned on the, you know, picking a, a percentage of, you know, what you need for vaccinations in order to, you know, not wear masks. That sounds a bit like extortion to me. Sounds a bit like, you know, implied vaccination. If we don't get this number, we're going to be wearing masks, you know, for the rest of your life kind of thing. So, I mean, I don't know how that's going to come across to a lot of people. And I, I really think that vaccination or, you know, any of that, it has to do as far as the decision with, you know, the parent, their doctor, and, you know, the kids. So I just, picking a percent and making it a condition of wearing masks or not, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I think that that's necessarily a great idea.
And Jeff, I would just point out that what we're, what we're simply saying is whatever the current rate is, and that rate I want to emphasize is not just the vaccination rate, it's the vaccination plus the COVID-19 infections in the last 90 days. That simply informs what is the county case rate that we'd need to be below. So it isn't as if that's not, it, it is part of the matrix, but it simply would inform the district in terms of what would the county case rate need to be in order to relax those procedures. So I, I think that that's an important distinction, though I do take your, your feedback. I, I understand what you're coming from in terms of just, you put the vaccination rate on. I, I certainly understand that you're saying there's an implication of that.
Right. Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I'm sure we're, you know, we're, we're getting down to, you know, and how, how fast, I mean, if in a perfect world, I know a lot of districts around us, they don't have any, you know, we can't go on forever. I mean, I know there's outbreaks and different things going on. It is the cold and flu season. I just got a flu shot on, on, on Friday. And, you know, my doctor said, I said, haven't seen much going on with the flu at all. I mean, I'm not against vaccinations, but I'm also very for, you know, not necessarily forcing on people and helping them make an implied decision and not having, you know, a data point, you know, on a condition for wearing masks or not. So, and I, I don't know, I mean, I, I just think the way that you see that, I don't know if that's necessarily intent, which I don't think it necessarily is, but a lot of people are going to see it that way. In my opinion.
Yeah, I think it was really, what we looked at is just trying to inform, you know, if we have greater protection between vaccination and COVID infection within the system. So the higher that that goes, the higher the county number could be for us to be able to modify the protocols. And, and Jeff, you make a very good point. And, and I want you to know, we are shifting our thinking. We're trying to shift our thinking from looking at this as a pandemic, which it still currently is, to looking at it as an endemic, right? We are, we are going to live with this virus. That's no question, right? The matter is, what is the, what is the way that we can get to a point where we are able to live it with limited, with limited interruptions? And how can we have that landing back to what we would consider to be somewhat normal? And so based on the feedback that the board had provided over the past several months, this is one of the ways that we looked at it, that the greater internal community protection that we have through vaccination, that would allow us to have a higher level of county rate transmission. So there is a pathway, even at a, at the, even right now, at the vaccination plus COVID rate that we're at now. If we got less than 100 per 100,000 residents for three weeks, which, which has happened over the last year, for example, we would have, if, if we had had that 60% vaccination at the end of last year, we would have gone without masks, you know, toward the end of the school year. So if you look at the historical data, we've been there before. So we're looking at something that was trying to be attainable.
You know, I, I don't know if you get there on a normal, natural progression, other than trying to, I mean, it's a crazy thing, it's a crazy world we're, we're in out there. You know, a guy gets a cheeseburger and fries for getting vaccinated. I just don't, don't think, I think we need a more, you know, professional approach to that. And I mean, if it's a parent's choice, and maybe if there's a shift, and eventually you get to that. But, you know, I, I don't know. I'm sure there's, you know, good ideas out there, but I do want the informed decision to be between, you know, the parents, the student, and their, you know, medical advisor.
Noel.
Jeff, I don't disagree with what you're saying. But I did hear on news last night that the majority of the COVID hospitalizations are people who are not vaccinated. So there is a statistical number there that might be significant.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily doubt that. I just don't think, I mean, I just like, I mean, as a condition to say, hey, you know, you're either going to wear a mask or not, but we need to get to this percentage. I don't know how that's going to fly in a, you know. And, and people have their own reasons. I mean, again, I'm not, you know, anti-vax. I was vaccinated myself, as you know, back when we all, you know, most of us got vaccinated. So, so I don't know, just, you know, just some points to bring up. And I, I think that, you know, I mean, in the winter season here, and there is a lot, you know, going on. So I don't know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's something that's, that's always moving and always changing. So, and I, and I don't look at it as, I look at this as a, you know, as moving forward, you know, what's the next thing out there? Or what, you know, what would we do if this was a huge flu outbreak? How would we handle it any different? And hopefully, you know, as any virus, you know, hopefully it, it gets weaker, you know, over time, and there'll be other variations. But, you know, we're kind of learning as we go along, and, and let's just get through this phase and just see, see what it is to, you know, what does it really take that we can get in agreement to go to, you know, masks optional kind of thing? But, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction anyway.
Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make sure that we also remember that this is highly contagious virus. That's different than some of the other, you know, like flu and colds. And, and not just highly contagious, but is taking lives. So that's why I feel strongly about treating it differently.
Well, you know, that's true too. I mean, we also have, I mean, I'm, you know, we have other options. I mean, obviously, if you're sick, stay home. I mean, if you have other options, you want to take that. But, you know, I, I think we're moving forward with where that is with the discussion now. And you keep bringing that up. We're going to come, you know, come to some decision here on this, you know, moving forward. And, and, you know, the heart goes out to anybody that's lost a family member to COVID. I was, you know, I, I know a lot of people that have been affected and had loved ones die. So I'm not going to judge on any of that. I just think that we, you know, we just need to work together and be persistent and, and make an informed decision.
Jeff, I would just also say on the, we've talked a couple of times about the different tools that we have to fight. So I'm really happy to say that Norfield Hospital and Clinic, yet again, a leader in their area, now offering monoclonal antibody treatment, which is, again, it's something that if it's applied within the first 10 days of infection, really can help. So that's another tool that as we continue to evolve, we're going to see that something that can be considered. You know, at the same time, I, I would just point, I would point everyone watching to take a look at the op-ed piece that Norfield Hospital and Clinic CEO Steve Underdahl put in the latest Norfield news. You can also get it on the hospital's website. And then really what we also saw yesterday, Star Tribune, a full-page ad taken out by probably the 10 largest healthcare systems in the state, really urging to maintain safety protocols right now because of the hospital overwhelm that we're seeing. So this is, I have, I've had a little bit of feedback saying, boy, it's kind of a tough time to bring forward exit strategy, right? Because we're really seeing, but I want to make sure that you think about, we're trying to look ahead, we're trying to have a, we're acknowledging the real challenges that we're facing. And we recognize that this pandemic has impacted people in so many different ways, whether you're a family that has had the virus in your home, whether you're a family who are just so disappointed on, on what you see your kids might have missed out on during the, and that comes through in a lot of different ways. People are really stressed about this. It's, it's a terrible set of circumstances that we're dealing with. So we always acknowledge the real historical difficulty that we are facing. But then we turn to an optimistic future, and that's the, the attempt that we're looking at here is, what are the conditions in the future? Hopefully, the not-too-distant future, right? Where we would be able to get back to some sense of normalcy. So I, I appreciate the board's comments, and I, I have a few things that we could certainly make some modifications and bring back a couple of different options for you as well.
Cory.
Just a couple of comments to follow up on what Claudia said. This is highly contagious, absolutely. If you look at the numbers that Matt shared from the county, we are at the seventh worst week we've had since this started in Rice County, just outside the top five. A year ago, obviously, we went home for two months, our students went home for two months. And we didn't have vaccines then. We have vaccines now, and we're just as bad as we were last winter. So I, I think we can't lose sight of that, that this, while some people are ready to move ahead, there's still a serious issue here. In terms of the matrix, for those who can't see it at home, who are watching this, there is absolutely a path forward with 0% vaccination. That is outlined in that matrix. Fortunately, as Dr. Hillman said, we have 56% of students vaccinated, which means we'll have a lower threshold eventually. So those are just options. But if no one was vaccinated, there's an opportunity for recommended masking at some point. Fortunately, that's not going to be a choice, I think. But I think we're going to hit 60 eventually.
Yeah, that might be a natural progression that we get to anyway.
And just for folks, you can take a look at the protocol exit criteria. It's included in the board packet that you can get on the school district website. It was also, a link was also emailed to all families last Friday.
So other questions or comments? Yeah, I just really appreciate, I have to echo what Claudia said about the work that's being done here. And I think that, that, you know, we all recognize this is going to be a significant decision that we're going to be tasked with. And I just want to, you know, thank the incident command team for where they are serving as an advisory capacity to the board. And it's, it's, you know, healthcare professionals and epidemiology and people with real knowledge of, of COVID and with public health backgrounds. And Sarah Coulter from Rice County as well. So, so their work as an advisory to us on the board has been really important. But at the end of the day, it is our decision. So what I appreciate about this is your emphasis that it is data-driven and is following the science. And that's what we have said we would do. I, I do think that, you know, I, I, I struggle with I, the understanding that the COVID, the vaccination rate will maybe not be something that everyone is, is willing to, to review and to understand is, is a significant measure for us. And I like that we're calling it an immunity rate, because, you know, that's what it is. It's helping, you know, us build that immunity, which, you know, we have been resolute in our commitment to uninterrupted in-person learning. And that's what we, that's what I think this really reflects. I understand that some of these data points are up for, you know, discussion, and I appreciate Amy's comment there. I think it, there is, you know, lots of different ways to measure that, obviously, for the case rate. But I think when I, when I think about how we have a commitment, commitment to transparency, I think I'm leaning more towards the Rice County rate, because it is really transparent for people, and, and they can look at that. And we do have a significant population that comes from Faribault. So, you know, and I, I don't know how the, the numbers would vary. If we, if we were to look at just the Norfield School District, there are probably some, sometimes when it would vary significantly or be a difference, and sometimes it would be close. But I think the transparency for our families and is important there. One question that I had too was the COVID-19 dashboard and, and how much we have used that. And I, I did want to make a comment, and thank you for adding the student and staff population on that, because it's really helpful, as we know, a percent of the, of the quarantine there is just, you know, to know the percent in the, or the total number in the building. Is this something, then, this, these data points, something that could be incorporated onto the dashboard?
I think that if the board, when the board decides the exit criteria, whatever those pieces of data are, would be added to the dashboard. We've had a commitment to being transparent about the information that we're able to provide. And so we would modify the dashboard to include that data.
Yes, Cory.
I have a question and then a comment. Dr. Hillman, as, as it relates to Faribault, our enrollment is about 8% open-rolled from Faribault. Is that correct?
Do the quick math in my head, 260? Yep.
It's not insignificant. Just a little context that, because we're talking, but not putting numbers to it. It's not just six students, it's 260. And then I, I was going to say, as part of the context, we're looking back at the last 20, 21 months now. I'd like to remind the board, three weeks ago, Dr. Ben Flannery was here pleading with us passionately about he and his team up there and all the workers there, saying in Norfield, it's never been worse. So we can look at county numbers, and that matters. But we know there were different places a year ago where it was higher than it was here, and we were relatively unscathed. We're not seeing that now. And I think it's important to listen to the local leaders who are living it every day. And while we can't put those numbers to it, I think it's important to look beyond just the county numbers and talk to those who are affected locally.
I just want to, I did go back and just quickly look at the enrollment options for, and I was incorrect. We're at 309 students from Faribault, which is exactly, it's about 8.1%. And, and just for context, we have, in 2122, we had 454 total students from other traditional public school districts open enrolled into Norfield, 309 of them from Faribault. So it's the substantial portion of people coming from other districts.
So I also appreciate that, you know, this isn't a, a decision that we have to make and that now, and that you're recommending January 31st. And I think there's, that, that seems like a, you know, a good, a good target date only because you were just talking about the spike that we just saw from the Thanksgiving break. So when we have the, the holiday break coming up in December, that is likely going to, if history is, is, you know, going to repeat itself, which it likely will, that we're going to see that, that case rate increase there, and that, that seems like a good date. So at this juncture, the board has provided some input on this. Is there other information or discussion that you'd like to have the board to have tonight as we, as, you know, we continue to, to think about an important, and, you know, what we think is going, a good exit strategy?
No, I mean, I, I think that we've had board members who have weighed in and shared their perspective, and I, I think it gives us some things to consider in whatever the second version of the draft would be. So I think I have what I need. And, and of course, if board members have other thoughts afterwards, they can certainly contact Anita or I, and we can take that into consideration as we make any updates for the second version that you'll see in January.
Question.
Yes, I would like to, you know, it, it'd go back to this immunity rate, because I do, I, I appreciate what Jeff said. And I, you know, I, I look at it as a data point that, that we're going to measure how we move forward. So, so as you hear the discussion the board members have in terms of, of how the community will react and our, our families, where, can you give us some insight there too, as to, as to how we would really explain that as, as our, you know, an important metric for us to, to measure?
So Julie, just what you're asking, what the key words would be to talk about? Okay. Yeah, I, I think the key component there is that when we look at, how are we protecting ourselves? How are we protecting our school community? We're looking at the two pieces that our experts are saying provide the greatest amount of protection for people from COVID-19. So one is, of course, vaccination. And then another part is that COVID infection within 90 days. And there's some evidence to show that it's, could even be, have some, I mean, beyond 90 days. But right now, MDH is saying, let's, let's go to the quarantine. This is, I think this is a good example. Right now, if you're someone who is identified as a close contact, the first question that we would ask is, you know, do you have any vaccination information that you could share? Because if a person's vaccinated, they do not need to quarantine if they were exposed to someone with COVID-19. The, if the person was not vaccinated, then the question is, was there a positive COVID-19 test within the last 90 days? And if the answer to that is yes, then again, that person does not need to quarantine. So what public health experts are telling us is those two components right now give such protection that if you're exposed to someone who has the virus, you're not needing to quarantine under those guidelines. So I would say the reason that we look at is that those are the two pieces of information that public health and MDH say do not, where they don't recommend or require quarantine in those circumstances. And so that's the reason that we've selected, that we selected that part. And then, of course, that is just to inform, I want to emphasize that again, that part on the left-hand side is simply to inform what is the seven-day case rate that we would use to make, really, the final piece is what is the seven-day case rate that is associated with the That is associated with the level of immunity rate that we have within the system. So. To get into it, you have to be at least below five percent ILI, which it does not appear is going to be a problem. We had really great ILI rates, which we, we are thrilled for. The second part is which part of the matrix, which line of the matrix do we use for the seven-day case rate? And that is based upon that immunity rate. So it's simply a way to inform and looking at what do public health experts tell us provide? The best protection. There's certainly other things that people should do to protect themselves. We know that. You know, making sure that you eat a healthy diet, making sure you get enough sleep, all the things that doctors tell you to do to keep yourself healthy. Anyway, we should also all be doing those. But when it comes to this specific virus, these are the two things that we understand provide us the greatest protection.
Excellent. Thank you. And then one other quick summary, if you're able to provide an update on the test to stay program.
Yes, we would be thrilled. We, 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 we got a call from the Department of Health last week because they had thought we were already doing it. To our knowledge, no one else in the state is doing this based on the call that we had with MDH. We have a plan. We have a procedure that we believe can work. So just for, for context, the test to stay program would be if there was someone who was identified as a close contact at school who would need to quarantine. Our plan would be to be able to send the student home with several boxes of an antigen-based rapid test. Each day of the students' quarantine, what would have been their quarantine, they would take a test. They would take a photo of that result. We've got a procedure, write your name and the date on it. Work with how we get that to the attendance office at their individual school. So we think we have a fairly good plan. What we don't have are the tests. And so we ordered over three thousand binax now over the counter tests on October second. And as of today, we got, I think we're up to three hundred and twenty tests. Which let's just say is not enough to sustain a program. So we are looking into some other testing options. I spoke with. A newly approved vendor from the state on Friday afternoon. There are some other antigen tests that we're looking at and considering. The binax now is the gold standard of the rapid antigen test. We just don't have enough tests on hand and we've. Been dutiful and, and talking with our colleagues at the Department of Education, Department of Health. To try to expedite getting us the binax now test, but we know that they are plagued, that Abbott, the parent company. Is plagued by a supply chain issue. So we are looking at a number of different, there's, some of you might have read last week that the governor shared that they were going to give a million. Antigen tests to schools. Well, it's a test called BD Veritor that looks like it's promising, but it requires a cell phone to be able to process the test. That's not equitable, right? We know that not all of our families have that kind of access. It's, it's more complicated than what we think. People can pull off in a morning. So we are hopeful, we are continuing to be diligent and it, it really is a matter. If we, once we have the tests, we think we can get it rolling within a, a reasonable amount of time, but we need to have the tests first. So that we can sustain it. We don't want to start and say, well, we're out of tests. So, you know, these people can come to school, but you can't because we don't have enough tests. And so. That's where we are at. The good news is talking with the Department of Health. We're not convinced we'd have to do a test every day. You could do, it sounds like Department of Health is coming out with some guidelines. It could be day one, three, et cetera. That would be great because that would, would extend the inventory to help more people. So. We are working diligently on it. We would, there's no one that would like to see it more than us because we know that it would be a real significant piece for our families. But we just can't start it with what we don't have.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I really appreciate board members weighing in on this and, and this is a decision that we will, we will continue to review and, and. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, no. That's okay. So I, I like that the, it, nothing will happen until the end of January. Because of the holiday stuff, but also with the new variant, the, the Omicron or Omicron, however Harvard's pronounced. And, and that potentially could be something that's contagious, but. The effects are not that strong, in which case it could skew the numbers. In our per hundred thousand, even so those numbers could be way up, even though the effect may not be as bad as the numbers. Give the impression. So since this is new and there's a lot to learn, I mean, and, and I think in Britain, it's the cases are doubling every day. And there, people are dying from it now, of course. So I like the, the fact that there's, we got six weeks here to process this and learn about what else is. Coming on the immediate horizon.
Great. Thank you. Thank, thank you again for everyone and Dr. Hillman for, for your work on this. So we will segue.
Yep, to Val. She'll talk a little bit about.
For an update on the COVID relief funding. Spending and this review or this report is in, was in your board packet. So thank you, Val.
Yeah, you bet. It's been several months since I provided an update on the federal relief fund. So I thought. Now would be a good time with a revised budget, just so the board can see all the different. Variations that we've received. This is everything that we have been allocated from March thirteenth of twenty twenty through. The best of my knowledge earlier today. So as you can see, we've got about eighteen different. Finance codes, each of those with their own rules, requirements, application process, budget and. Specifications. So. When Craig said that the compliance was through the roof, that's what he meant. So we are tracking all of these individually on trying to ensure that we're. Meeting the intent of what the funds were meant to be used for. So. Several of these have been completely expended. Those were the initial allocation. So Finn one, five, one, one, five, two and one, five, three were the very first ones that we received. One, five, four was the CRF funding that we had basically six months to spend from July first to December thirtieth. That is the one that was tested for the audit that Craig referenced as well. All of the other ones are kind of in progress. There are several that have been in and out. So like the Finn one, six, five was for the summer preschool. We were. We actually qualified. Early ventures as preschool per their definition. And so we were able to get about twenty-four thousand dollars this summer to help support their program. Well, I have one of the descriptions wrong. Learning recovery. I copied the line. It's not COVID testing. Sorry. There are the ARP learning recovery. So the Finn one, six, nine with inaccurate description. We actually just found out about that. In the last probably month or so. So overall, we've been allocated about six and a half million dollars. We've spent just over two. We do have all of the Finn one, five, five. That's the S R two that I referenced earlier. That is all been budgeted and. Is being spent through primarily payroll this year. That should be expended by the end of this fiscal year. The two million dollars for the S R three is the other large allocation that we received. And as Dr. Hillman has referenced, we're being very intentional. And not spending that all right away. We will be using that. For the five hundred thousand dollars of health insurance contribution. So that's, I just wanted to provide a summary because it is significant, but we are being very. Thoughtful. E.g. intentional and making sure that we're using the funds as intended and not. Not in ways that just allow us to do things that maybe we're interested in doing, but don't meet the impact. Any questions?
Well, I think we can point to this as exhibit A as to how impressive a clean audit is, right? This is crazy because this is just COVID funding and, and all of the other things that you have to track. And I think it's also exhibit A about stewardship. And I know you have been tenacious in pursuing every dollar and determining how we can. Fully leverage all of the COVID funding that is available. So, so thank you. This is a really great update. And I know board members will have questions. So anyone. Want to start with a question or comment on this funding some?
Is the money in the bank?
No, all of, all of the federal funds, with the exception of Finn one, six, three are reimbursement based. So we have to spend it and then they reimburse us.
And that could potentially go away? We hope not.
No, if we miss. The deadline or, you know, there's things like that that could happen, but I've, at least not in my tenure, I've never experienced them actually. Taking back any allocation that they have given us. We, we've gone into their system and. Said we accept the award and intend to spend it. So I would not anticipate that happening.
All right, I, I was, I guess. Like some of the S R three funds that would go to twenty twenty-four. That are. Perhaps potentially under political. Her strings that, that we may, may or may not use. So, or may or may not get. But hopefully we will.
I would be. Surprised if there was that situation. I think that that would be. Politically pretty challenging for all involved because the funds were intended to help schools. And I think any kind of. Take back of any of that revenue would be ill-received. But I've been wrong before.
It'd have to be a repeal of the legislation, correct? I mean, it's in, it's in statute that the.
It's not in statute. So it's a, it's a flow-through. So the state of Minnesota was allocated funding. And some of it where they were directed. So it's maybe federal legislation. And some of it they have control over and have chose to. Allocate in different ways. Some of it's competitive grants, some of it's allocation based on your title one calculation and status. So I would, I would not anticipate it going, going backwards.
Great question, Tom. Amy, you have a question?
First, thank you for this list. I had not a clue that there are so many different funds that you're working off of. And with over four million dollars still unclaimed, do we have momentum going forward where we're going to? Be able to claim all of that, do you think? Are there plans in place or will that all be spent by the end of the year?
Not by the end of the year. We do have. For, for most of the large ones, we do have until September thirtieth of twenty-four. So we have them over the span of a couple of years. I would say the vast majority, we have ideas. But again, we're being, we want to make sure that we understand what the needs are at the building level and what our student needs are before we just put things into play. So there are, we have several things in the works, put it that way, that we've discussed and think. Are reasonable to move forward. There are also several things that are already in place. So the one point one, six, five million. We've only spent two hundred and nineteen thousand. That's been one fifty-five. If you're following along on the gigantic spreadsheet, but. That is staffing that's in place. So that's what we have spent in payroll, but the staff are hired, they're contracted, we're going to pay them. And so I anticipate by June thirtieth that that will be completely spent. The, the other ones are. Are hit or miss depending on what the requirements are. So the two million is the most flexible. We can actually use it just to support the budget. And so part of our. Part of our kind of reserve is anticipating this. We, we know we're doing a priority-based budget process and we can use these funds next year. And partially the year after. And so we can be strategic in the way. We do that process as well to help with the operational side of it. So if there were a budget reduction. We could choose as a district to use some of these funds to help. Slow that or, you know, make it one-year expansion, that kind of thing. So we're just being. It's a lot of money to spend. And even if we did have a full plan, I'm not sure we could find the staff to implement it at this point. So.
If I just make the point, we, we have claimed the money. I mean, I think that, that, I mean, we, we, these are dollars that we know that we have from the state. In terms of that they've been claimed, it's just that they haven't been all specifically allocated yet. And we did do a needs assessment and part of the needs assessment was budget stability. So for example, we added additional support positions. Those are things that those dollars that we have yet to formally allocate. Could be spent on moving forward. So I think it's important to say that. It's not that we haven't claimed the money. We, we have it. It's a matter of that we are being very specific. And how we look at spending, especially that two million dollars where we're really looking at saying the plan, we've implemented some of the things. That included the life coach, some of those other pieces. And then that budget stability is part of the plan. So I think it's just, I think it's a. A minor piece in wording, but I think that that wording is important in this case.
Other questions, comments?
Claudia. On Finn one fifty-nine, support homeless students during the pandemic. And, and I know we're not brainstorming and I'm not looking for them, you know, my new details, but is that something where? We could partner with other organizations to address their needs, for example, the Key or some other community-based organization?
I believe so. We actually just found out about that allocation just over a month ago. So it's still a little fresh, but I do believe that we could partner. I have had one or two meetings with Sarah Pratt. She is our homeless liaison for the district. And one of the biggest things that we see in our. In our place with the students is really just the transportation and ways to support them getting to school. So that's kind of where our conversation has been so far, but. Certainly. There's, I, I'm almost positive that we could partnership based on what I'm remembering from the allowable uses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know, kind of a COVID question, but maybe somehow related. I mean, I think test to stay is kind of the future. And I think. You know, do we get reimbursement on test to stay, you know, tests in a sense? And if we could figure out how to put in an order. And maybe, you know, have a stock of that. But then again, does the test have a shelf life? You know?
I take that one.
Yeah. So the, the tests that I'm referencing, Jeff, so far, those are available to us free through the state. We are exploring some other options that we could use the testing grant that we have to pay. We could also use a number of the other COVID-related funds to pay for those as well. Right now, the testing grant that we got, we're trying to focus that on staffing. To be able to support the staffing of that testing center through the year. We are looking at trying to be able to do some hour expansion there because. There's still quite a bit of need. So we could use some of those existing dollars for the purchase of tests. But the tests that we're talking about, we are able to get from the state for free. We're looking at, if there were some other venues or some other options that we would have to pay for, we'd have the flexibility to do that. But we think it's best practice right now. For the over the counter binax now to get them from the state for free. And even if we went to try to buy them, I don't think we, I, I learned that a number of suppliers actually go through the same vendor to get their. Their inventory. So it all comes to one point and that particular supplier doesn't have enough to go around either.
So how much really is that test per test, if you know, and. Twenty-five bucks and can somebody just go to Walgreens and buy?
You can't buy, you can't buy enough to run a program though.
If you tell, told me my kid, I can't be in school if I went to Walgreens and spent twenty-five bucks on this test and took a picture and sent that back in, could he go back to school?
Yeah. So we've talked about that, Jeff. And, and the issue is it's just not equitable, right? Because then people who have means and are able to do that and would be able to have an unfair advantage over others. So that's why we need to run a universal program.
Well, for twenty-five bucks, we should have a, you know, fund there somewhere. I mean, if that's the case, you don't want to keep kids out of school. So I hear what you're saying though.
All right. Well, thank you for, for this report, Val, and for your work. So that includes what we had for the discussion around COVID nineteen and superintendent operation updates. So that does. Conclude our items for discussion. So we can now move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping moved by Amy? Is there a second, second by Noel? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a number of items for individual action tonight, so we will work our way through those. And we have a number of items for individual action tonight, so we will work our way through those. Um, our first is, uh, just approving the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty one audit as presented. So is there a motion to approve the twenty 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 one audit report as presented? Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Noel. Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor of, uh, the approval of the audit report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next item is a motion to certify to county auditors the twenty twenty one payable twenty twenty two final certified levy limitation and certification report in the amount of twenty million nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, which represent a one point five percent decrease from the prior year. Moved by Cory, is there a second? Second by Amy. Are there any questions or comments on our, uh, final certified levy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two general fund budget of revenues of fifty-eight million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand thirteen and expenditures of sixty-one million thirty thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Cory. Any questions or comments on the general fund budget revision? Just one last thank you to Val for all of your work and, and what has gotten us here to approving all of this, uh, important, uh, financial aspects for the district. So, uh, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we now are going to move on, uh, to, uh, some items that we reviewed at our, uh, November, last November board meeting, November twenty-second. First is the school resource officer agreement, which we reviewed at our November board meeting, uh, November twenty-second, I believe it was. So is there a motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with the city of Northfield for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four calendar year as presented? Moved by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Noel. So, uh, there are questions or comments that board members have on this. Claudia?
Um, okay, so I wanted to make some additional comments tonight. I made some comments at, um, our last meeting. Um, and I did get a chance to talk to Dr. Hillman one-on-one and I did feel heard, and so I appreciate that. Um, and then I just wanted to start with some, some questions. Is this the first year that we're using the memorandum?
Uh, in terms of the contract? No, this would be very similar to the previous memorandum.
Okay, and it's, um, looks like it's good for three years. Is there any way to update it or change it or discuss it in the interim period?
Yeah, so there is, uh, if, there is a term, uh, where there is a, an opportunity for, uh, preliminary notice of termination, um, ninety days uh, prior to the, um, date of the termination of agreement, but th- there, it, it can certainly be looked at during that time period by either party.
Uh, but not specifically to terminate, but to
To update it.
Update it or change it in any way.
Um, I, I believe there would always be the opportunity to negotiate that if, if needed.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments and then we can, um, move on from there. Um, just that my concern with the program, um, you know, first of all, it has nothing to do with our police officers in our police department. And it has everything to do with our district, um, needs. Um, I don't feel that the memorandum as presented is everything that it could be. Um, and I'm not comfortable with our district participating in the program. Um, just want to highlight that the school resource officer program is very much about law enforcement, crime in and around the school property and not so much about relationship building. Um, and that's the part that bothers me the most. Um, the SRO is a trained officer, first and foremost, who reports to the chief of police. And they, the officer will carry the mission of the police department and act in accordance with their noble mission to serve, to protect, and they're, they're bound to certain legal processes that, um, uh, a person who's not an officer would not have to adhere to. Also, the memorandum with the police departments in section one point four, um, spells out that the SRO has the freedom to leave our school so that they can join in any community emergencies, but it does not outline what the SRO is to do with their time on campus. And we don't see what times are required to be on campus, how many educational opportunities they're supposed to develop or facilitate. It doesn't require that they work on the relationship with students during the breaks, but in fact, they're to go back to their police duties full-time during those school breaks. Um, I think that sixty-four thousand dollars is an inexpensive way to guarantee another caring adult, um, in our buildings, but it's also a mixed message. Um, they're highly trained officers, they're not counselors, they're not trained teachers, they're not life coaches. Um, also the SR, uh, I wanted to also acknowledge that Officer Bart has a reputation that precedes him that he is beloved and will be missed by many students and our staff. But the memorandum is what's going to hold our new SRO to account. And that the memorandum doesn't, uh, it speaks very little about the expectation of relationship building and more about the flexibility of hours, um, that pay for their time both during and after school is in session, who the SRO reports to, um, what the SRO will require in terms of school needs, administrative needs, and also that the SRO, um, appropriately is not responsible for discipline. And I, um, I would hope that our district could move away from law enforcement on campus and into a partnership with the city where the city's providing the educational opportunities like Dare and the Mott Crash, um, as part of their community engagement goals and not as a vendor. And I think that if we want another caring adult on campus, I think that for sixty-four thousand, we could create a position, um, for somebody who would be beholden to our mission and values in our vision, um, and not somebody that would be on campus, um, as a enforcer of the law with the badge and cuffs and a cer- service, um, service weapon. That's so, those are my comments, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Claudia. Other questions or comments? Uh, I'm sorry, did I? No, I really appreciate you, you reviewing that, and I think it, it does give us some, some opportunity to look at some things going forward. I think what, what I heard in July from, from the, uh, the, the, um, presentation that we heard, that I think they are aware of some, some things where they do need to strengthen some of the relationships and some of the training that they receive and their ability to, to really, um, develop those relationships. But to me, the importance of having someone who, you know, we have to acknowledge that school violence is real. And so I think that, that, um, the, the safety and the protection that, that we get from the, the law enforcement there is also some, a factor to consider. So, um, if there's any other questions or comments, um, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we will move on to the start time for school board meetings. At our November twenty-second board meeting, we had really good discussion around, um, what, uh, we might want to make a change to, um, uh, our start time. So based on that discussion, we have developed the motion to begin regular score, school board meetings at six P M. Instead of C at seven P M. And to modify policy two oh six, operation of the school board bylaws that regular school board meetings are adjourned at or before nine P M whenever possible, instead of ten P M beginning in January of twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion? Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Claudia. So questions, comments? Again, we had great discussion. Um, just so you know that, uh, the motion I read was the revised motion that was in our table file this evening, indicating that our adjournment at nine P M is whenever possible, not an actual hard, hard stop at nine P M. Um, so any further questions or comments? All those, oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
Um, yes, well, I, I think it's a good idea to try a new time and see how it works. And, and I'm planning to vote on it, but I would also like to suggest that in May, we just take a poll or, you know, to see what, how people are feeling about this time and whether we want to choose to continue with it because another logical time to switch our time, um, or meet, start time would be July first. And if we're all think this is great, then we'll just keep going, but, um, this gives us a chance to touch base and see what, how we're working with it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? The, um, policy two, two oh six does allow us to, um, make modifications to our, our start times when, whenever we so deem them, so that is something that we could, we could potentially look at reviewing in May. Um, so the motion before us would be to start regular board meetings at six P M instead of seven P M beginning January of twenty twenty-two. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other questions or comments? And we can go to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item is the five-year strate- strategic plan, and I appreciate the work that Dr. Hillman did to, um, collectively, um, summarize all of the great work that we did at the work session and then the follow-up conversation and discussion we had at our last board meeting to present the final draft of the twenty, uh, of the five-year strategic plan, um, which is now the twenty twenty-seven five-year strategic plan. So is there a motion to approve the plan as presented? Moved by Tom, is there a second? Second by Claudia. So questions or comments people have on the strategic plan?
Questions, um, yeah, I, I wasn't positive that we're voting on that tonight. I probably would have liked to tweak some things in there too, so I'll probably be a no vote on that, but it's just because there's a few things in there that I, um, wanted to review, which, I mean, I didn't, so anyway.
Did you want to, um, give us the comments on it?
Um, no, I'm sure it'll pass anyway, I just, uh, you know, I just wanted a more time to look at it, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, I was looking for my draft. Um, other questions or comments? Cory?
So I do have a late suggestion, and it's for consistency. So I don't know if it's too late in the game to make an amendment, but, um, in reviewing this for tonight, I did notice number seven under benchmarks says all children graduate, but most are graduates are legally adults. So I don't know if that matters, if I'm being fanatic about this or not. But in looking back through the rest, I saw an inconsistency where we use student sometimes and children sometimes. So in vision, we have, we pre, we prepare every student and then under people, we prepare students, learner outcomes, it's student, and then equity, it's child. Uh, and then benchmarks, it's all children, so I don't know if it matters, maybe it's not that big of a deal, but, um, number seven was the first thing that caught my eyes, children graduating, and most of them are eighteen.
Yeah, it's not an unfair point. I, I, I think that that is one of those, um, components that we're talking about, children, you know, coming through the system. So you're right, when they graduate, many of them, not all of them, um, there will be some people who cross the, uh, stage in June who are not, or who are still minors. We have a number of students who are still seventeen when they graduate. Um, I'm sure we're not seventeen-year-olds that want to hear be called children either, but I think for the consistency of the, we're talking about, you know, this, our children as a collective. Um, and I, I do think of the things that, you know, if we were to move forward, we, we could certainly make some modifications to those benchmarks as we move ahead in terms of, uh, like for like, um, terminology, as long as it wouldn't necessarily change the, the, the impetus of the statement.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to hold this up, but I had pointed out, because I didn't know if that consistency did matter or not. So, thanks for hearing me.
Other questions, comments?
I'm just gonna follow up with what Cory said. I do think using the word students is, um, we, we should consider that in most of these places where children is listed because a student is, reflects back on the learning side and the teaching side, and they are students. And I think by the time kids are in middle school and high school, they don't like to see themselves as children anymore anyway. So if we can switch at least some of those to students, I think that would be better.
Yeah, so I would say that, uh, for sure, one and two would need to remain as children because those are focused on, um, you know, number one is about children who are not yet technically our students, right? Because they are ready for kindergarten, some of whom are our students, some of, I was at a pre-kindergarten and a kindergarten meeting at four o'clock today where we brought in preschoolers from across the community to talk about how we make sure all children are ready for kindergarten. That part about being connected to the community, that includes, you know, preschool and early childhood folks. You get to the grade level in third and sixth grade, that's something that I think you certainly could switch to students. Again, children and, um, number four, uh, would include early childhood, because remember, we're really looking at ourselves as an E twelve system. Um, so some of those people aren't necessarily our students quite yet. Uh, I suppose you could, you could, depending on, um, if they're enrolled in a, in an early childhood program, if they're part of our childcare program. So we could go through and look at, we, we were looking at it from a consistency perspective, but as long as people, I think the key thing is if you're approving this and we're talking about that minor modification of that particular component, I don't see that as a huge deal. We can make those changes where needed.
Other questions, comments? Tom?
Um, I'll just add that I agree with, uh, the changes to students slash children.
Other questions, comments? I think we have a lot to be proud of. I think the strategic plan is really excellent and we just really, uh, appreciate the work that Dr. Hillman did to reach out to district stakeholders and get input and the work, um, alongside, um, Zach Pruitt from Northfield Promise so that we understood, you know, that we're moving forward as a total community. And I, I think that our work session was really excellent. It was really exciting as we mire in the details of, of COVID and how we're managing the everyday and that we have the ability to really look forward and, 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 um, plan out a vision for the, a new vision for the district. I just think it's excellent, I like the way it's laid out and, and I think it's really clear and I think it really, well, well, um, you know, really clearly tells, tells everyone where our district, where our priorities are, where we are headed and what our vision is. So I, I think we have a lot to be proud of here and, and I just appreciate everyone's work that got us to this place. So any other questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting the strategic plan, um, twenty twenty-seven, reaching out, reaching up the twenty twenty-seven Northfield School District Strategic Plan, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have, uh, motion carries. Were you able to record that accurately, the vote, Anita? Okay, excellent. So, uh, we will move on to, um, the request for additional education assistance support for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, there was information that was provided in the packet. I will ask for a motion and then we can, um, have questions and comments. So is there a motion to approve the additional education assistant positions as presented for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Moved by Noel, is there a second? Second by Claudia. So any questions or comments on the, uh, request for approval of the additional educational assistant positions?
And if I can just point out, this is one of the ways that having the flexibility of not having allocated all of our federal funds responds to the needs that we are seeing, uh, in our school. So, um, this is exactly one of the reasons we've been conservative with those funds.
Amy?
So while I definitely want to be supportive of our teachers and our students, the question I have is, um, you know, what? Why could this not have been predicted with more time? Um, to allow us to go through the full process? Why is it being brought right to us and asked for a vote this time around? I know with the special ed, um, you know, those positions have some urgency to them and I'm just wondering if there's the same sort of urgency here.
Had we had two meetings in December, we may have done it that way. But because we have one meeting in December and wanting to have this position start as quickly as we can after the beginning of the new year or, or even potentially about a few days before that, that is the reason that we're bringing it to you in this way this evening. And in terms of foreseeing it, these are pieces that, um, these are things that after one quarter of the school year are identified as needs that are on the ground, um, and what people are seeing. So for example, with the first grade, uh, support scenario, really seeing what were the gaps that were needed for additional support? Because we had, you know, kindergarten students in a variety of different ways last- Because we had, you know, kindergarten students in a variety of different ways last year in terms of whether they were homeschooled, whether they were portage, whether they were then, whether they were in our own kindergarten. And so some of that initial family conference testing helped us a bit, but it's really after the teachers have a chance to see and the principals have a chance to see what is the impact. Here's one place where we know if we add this hour per day for each kindergarten section, we're going to be able to help close some of that gap. And then for the fifth grade component, that group's a little bit larger than some of the other grade levels of comparable grade levels. Not significantly large, but larger across the system. And it's an area where we know that that educational assisting can also assist with that particular cohort of students. So because we had people who were in a variety of different educational pieces last year, we could have predicted, but we might have been wrong. We made some predictions, right, in terms of where we invested quite a bit of our COVID dollars. But these are the kinds of things that, there are things you could predict, and then there are things that you see how things are going, and you make adjustments as the year goes on.
So I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but it's still, couldn't they have seen this back in October?
I, I think you could say that the possibility could have been there to see, would have been a month into school in October. We ask people to really dig in and make sure that it's not an adjustment period. So we could have brought it back in October, the question that I would have had at that point was, do we have enough data to warrant whether these additional positions are needed?
So along that questioning, this is, we used to have the contingency plan, correct? Dollars, and that is how in the past we've had it adjusted for this type of, of need that, you know, as, as the general flow and the, you know, the makeup of classes. So if, you know, kind of maybe speak to how we used to use that, that fun.
Yeah, so for quite a few years, we would identify a certain amount of money or F T E, if you will, that we, that the administrators had budgeted at the beginning of the year, and then we would be able to make those decisions on an interim basis. And of course, keeping track of what those positions, so let's say that we needed to add an additional section at a particular grade level at a building. You would have already approved a certain number of F T E ahead of time that we could use to react or respond. From time to time, we have used that contingency dollars for educational assistant positions. And I have to be straightforward, many times in the last five or six years, that contingency money has been spent before the school year started because we get those students right at the beginning of the year, we break classes down. But it is not, there is, there have been years where we have not spent it all at the beginning of the year. And then as we see a need like this, this is exactly the kind of thing that contingency would have covered, but we did not budget contingency this year because of the additional federal dollars.
So it is federal dollars that is covering this.
We are using S R three to cover this.
So is there other questions or comments? Tom?
Could somebody explain the numbers? You have under the first grade support salary of seventeen hundred fifty nine. And then on the fifth grade, there are two, I don't know, the numbers don't add up.
They do add up. So the first grade support is one hour per day. So if we hired one E A for one hour a day starting January third, we would pay them seventeen fifty nine through the end of the year. Based on that rate. And then we're asking for basically one hour for each class in each building, if that makes sense. So there's twelve, twelve hours total that we're asking for through the end of the school year. Does that make sense? And then the fifth grade is one person for six and a half hours a day, and so they are benefit eligible. And so the numbers are, are just different with that calculation.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Claudia?
So follow up on that, then how many E As for that first grade position? I understand twelve hours is what's needed, so how many E As?
That, I'm not sure. They're working through, if this were to be approved, what that could look like? Could it be additional hours for existing people? They do have some part time E As that might be able to add an hour here, an hour there. Could they structure them where they would kind of rotate through classrooms? But they were, it was a request and they weren't sure, so I can't, I think it would depend on the people and the positions and what people were able to do, if that makes sense.
Okay, and then we're definitely needing to hire one additional for fifth grade?
Correct. I, I think building principles are fairly creative. It's possible, you know, that they could have a position like a two hour a day position sometimes, while people, where they could, you know, do, you could do two classes. They could add some on to existing folks, as Val said, so there's a variety of ways they could cover those twelve hours. But it is one, it's one particular position for fifth grade. Though I suppose that the possibility could exist that if they can't get someone for six and a half hours, they could potentially do a person for three and a quarter each. But most likely, that will be a six and a half hour position for one person.
Okay, great questions, other, any other questions or comments? Yes, we have a motion and a second to approve the additional educational positions, educational assistant positions as presented for the remainder of the twenty one twenty two school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is all of our items for individual action tonight, we can move on to the enrollment report, which was included in our packet. Dr. Hillman, if you wanted to provide an overview?
So we take a look, excuse me, if we take a look at the bottom line, we actually stayed with the exact number of students this month as we had last. So it's flattened out a bit, thirty eight sixteen. Now, of course, how you get there is a little bit different in terms of you're seeing some additional students. Seeing some students leaving the high school to go to the A L C, you see some more students at the middle school. You're seeing fairly stable pieces at the elementary school. So again, how we arrive at the number, the variables changed a little bit, but we are the same number for that full time excluding early childhood and part time and independent study at the A L C.
So questions or comments? I, it was interesting to see that we had an increase of fourteen students in portage, kind of which were high school. So it does appear that they are Northfield students who have moved over, it isn't some from outside the district.
Yeah, my understanding is right now, most of those changes during the year are Northfield students changing from an in person to an all the time online program. And we did want to do that, we actually did ask people to do that at the quarter break, which is why they would show up now.
Okay, good to see that, you know, it continues to be a, a good choice for, for our students. So that was good to see that for some of those students to choose to move to, to portage was a good decision for them. I think, were there other questions on the enrollment report? Okay, so that's it for items for individual actions. So future meetings, based on board action tonight, our next meeting is the organizational board meeting that will now be held on, will be held on January tenth, twenty twenty two, now at six P M, followed by the regular school board meeting. And then again, in February, Monday, February fourteenth at six P M as well. What a way to celebrate Valentine's Day, right? You can be among your beloved school board members, so, and, and our administrators. So anyway, so a little editorial there. So those are our meetings for January and the first part of February. I appreciate everyone hanging in tonight, it's been a long meeting, the discussion's been great. Lot of weighty decisions ahead of us, but I just really value everyone's commitment to our, to our vital work. So with that, enjoy the rest of twenty twenty one year. This is the only meeting we do have in December, so wish everyone all the best as we move into twenty twenty two. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by, oh, I'm sorry, Tom?
No, I just want to add, they moved the speed sign over by Greenville. So that's all, that's all done and working great, so.
Great note to end on, thank you. Thanks, Amy, for letting me know that Tom had a comment. So we had a motion to adjourn by Noel, and did, we needed a second, I believe. Second by Amy, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.